Time being six thirty four. I call into session the regular planned planning board meeting. For June twenty first, two thousand eighteen. On the agenda tonight at six forty, we have Justin Leclair for used car sales at four thirteen Plymouth Street. At six fifty, we have an informal discussion at three thirty Plymouth Street for O'Reilly's Auto Pots. At seven PM, we have Walter Graney for an informal discussion on Hilda Lane. Seven ten, site plan for Town Barn for fuel tank replacement. Seven twenty, site plan review for three twenty Mont Ponce Street for landscaping. Also have ongoing business for signatures. General discussion for unregistered vehicle permit extension. Some secretarial and bills payable.
Make a motion to accept the meeting as read.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's how it starts.
Doesn't the acting chair have to read it in now or can they not do that?
I don't know.
I think anyone can actually.
Okay. I wasn't sure what the process was.
Yeah, so technically I guess it usually does go like Chev vice Chev, but.
Anybody did.
I've done it a bunch, so.
Okay, good enough.
Just now you remember, you jump right on it and nominate Marcus vice Chev.
That's like an act.
You did that for me last time.
I may have been nominated when I wasn't here last time, so lucky for me.
We wanna do, um, we've got bills and we can do the meeting minutes, get that out of the way while we're waiting for six forty.
Sure. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills of Pitney Bowes postage meter for a hundred dollars. I'm gonna have a bill.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I don't have the bill for WB Mason and you don't have the actual.
No, I was gonna order some supplies and I just haven't gotten them.
I'm gonna give you an open ended.
Just wait till next time.
We really don't know what we need, so you know, it's okay to just put what's left in the expense account back out of town anyway.
I think we should fund your water for the next year.
That would be nice. Thank you.
Okay, do the motion on the meeting minutes. From any of these, do we have the right people here?
Yeah, it's our April nineteenth and then May third.
You didn't send these out in email, I thought I was gonna proofread them.
They were a long time ago, Mr. Boucher.
They were a long time ago, that's, I probably proofread them in advance.
Yeah.
Sure you did.
We were just trying to get the.
No, I do.
At least the right combination of people here.
I know I speak with mush mouth sometimes, but seeing it written on papers.
I'm trying to get better at that before you.
It's tough, man.
Where are we with the Duncan Donuts Halo sign? Are they, uh?
They're holding off on it for now until they decide what they wanna do.
Just not gonna light it, 'cause they put it up, just not gonna turn the lights on, right?
It's not even.
Oh, it's not that type of sign?
They didn't even put it up.
Oh, that's a shame.
No, they didn't.
They didn't put the, um, the lighting down.
I thought they put the signage up, but just didn't turn the lights on.
Yeah.
The signs up. No, there is no lights, they just put the sign, the lesser sign up. It doesn't have the halo on it.
Which is kinda ridiculous.
It's nice, making it a whole thing.
They sent us all the final record information, right, of what they actually installed?
Mm-hmm.
It just seems, I mean, we spent.
And I even got.
Two hours trying to.
We use.
Work our way through it.
I know. I never went, I didn't go on.
Yeah, me neither.
He's doing another one on the twenty ninth.
Of June?
Mm-hmm.
It's next Thursday.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from April nineteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Do we have a second?
All second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Well, I get the official copy.
I got an official one too, you got one too?
She just does it, she just does it to make us feel safe.
Uh, you're more special than me, do we need two copies of this signed?
Yeah.
Yeah. Copy and a, yeah.
One to yours, okay. There you go.
Well.
Yeah.
Which one did I just sign?
You just did the May third?
I wrote them both. There we go.
This is the April one?
Yes.
We sent them out April one.
Yep.
Maybe two, alright.
Yep.
I made this one back. This one's an official copy.
A little squishy then.
Do we need, you need two of them?
Yeah. You gotta sign that, right?
No.
Nah.
I just wanna give a second.
Oh, yeah.
That May third one, I just had it. Was it the May third one I had to change? Um, I'll remember the votes were five to zero to zero and I needed to change from four to zero to zero because John was again. That was the only thing that we needed to change.
Okay, so now it's. All in favors instead of five to.
Some of them were.
Uh, yeah, there was, there was definitely one. Gordon, it was, oh yeah, it was two two. Yep. Make the motion to accept the meeting minutes for May third, two thousand eighteen.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
And the other two, we just don't have the enough, the right people here to be able to do it, okay? Do you have your official copy?
I have an official copy. Is yours the official?
The official copy.
Are they all official copies?
Yeah. Uh-huh. They all say, oh, yours is the copy.
It doesn't matter, it's still the same copy. It depends on two different files.
All three. One for you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, being six forty one, uh, do we have Justin Leclair here for the used car sales?
Not yet, we can jump ahead.
Okay. Uh, three thirty, or is this us, three thirty Plymouth Street?
Um, I printed, uh, couple copies of the board I'm gonna present for you guys to just have a close look. So just for the record, my name is Casey Birch, I work for Sole Engineering, we're based out of Monroe, Connecticut. We do have a satellite office slash home office here at Bridgewater Math, uh, we're working on a final place up here. I'm here today to have an informal discussion about a potential project that we are trying to, uh, get through the board here. It's a proposal to O'Reilly's, it's situated at, uh, three thirty Plymouth Street. Um, it's in between Nasarla.
Nazarela.
Nazarela, uh, Farm and Mutual Bank. And it's bordered by Plymouth Street to the west and, uh, Farland to the east. There's a intermittent swale that runs along the border to the east here as well. Um, we're in the, currently in the process of getting wetland flagged out there and survey. Right now, we have record of wetlands in the lower corner, um, but obviously that's, I think that was done like two thousand fourteen, so. That may change depending on what, what we get from our soil scientists. We are proposing a two thousand, seven thousand two hundred and twenty-five foot square foot O'Reilly's with the main center being adjacent to Plymouth Street with loading to the south. The access drive is located a hundred and fifty feet approximately from the intersection of Stop and Shop, um, and the Plymouth Street side drive. And we're aligning it with All Seasons Restaurants.
Happy Dragon, now the Happy Dragon.
Happy Dragon, now, okay. It's been a while since I've been in the area, I grew up in Bridgewater, but never, never, it's been so long since I've been in Halifax.
Yep.
So yeah, we're proposing thirty-six parking spaces, uh, your regulations are pretty stringent with parking. If we were to do the full, not the reduced, the full would require approximately, I think it was seventy-eight spaces, which for this size building.
Really?
Yeah, which, um, obviously.
That's, that's employees and square footage figured in?
Yes, and, and the reduction, I think got to around a forty-eight with like, I forget why you need to reduce it up the top of my head, I think, um, we got to reduce it. Certain percentage for doing something, I think internally, I can't.
A deep and green space too, I think.
Thank you, yeah. So.
Okay.
So even forty-eight spaces is kind of a lot for an O'Reilly's, I know if you're familiar with O'Reilly's, it's, it's a lot like an auto zone. Uh, they don't do car service there, they just sell, sell product and, yeah, they're a retail store. So yeah, they have a, um, parking requirement of thirty-six spaces, obviously they're willing to budge on that, they, they like thirty-six. They don't like too, too many more than that, so. As a part of this process, we would probably have to try to get a variance.
For a waiver.
For a waiver on that, is, is that how typically you guys do waivers or variances, you go through ZBA process and stuff like that?
I think we can do it with the site plan, we can look at the site plan.
For parking, but setbacks would be zoning board, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you could get tech, I mean, right now we're okay, but.
Yeah, we can't do parking.
Depending on what, what we get back from the actual survey and the wetlands, um, because this is a digitized property line from your GIS. So depending on what we get back from the actual survey, I mean, it's a tight site already, I mean, the, the building may have to be adjusted. This isn't final plan by any means, uh, so we, we may potentially have to encroach a setback or, uh, possibly, so. I was just wondering, gauging your, like how.
If you're, if you've got a conforming lot right now, they're not, the zoning board is not allowed to, um, give waivers on setback requirements, 'cause then you're gonna make it non-conforming.
Certainly not in the building.
Okay, alright, gotcha. We spoke with the DOT, they do not have any jurisdiction on this road, which I was unaware, 'cause it is a state road.
Yep.
So, one of the big things that my client is always nervous about is DOT and getting the driveway parrot cuts and, yeah. So I, I wanted to, definitely wanna have an informal discussion with the town, because obviously you're the other one that's gonna be voting on either that. Just to see if you, you would see any potential issues, obviously you're, mentioned earlier, we'd probably have to have a parking study and a, and a traffic study. Um, which we do have in the books and up above, so we're, we're, we're in the process of doing that as well. But other, I mean, other than that, like, I would like to know any potential issues that you've seen with this site drive, um, since I'm not from the area.
What's previous proposals on this property, it's pretty wet behind the bank there, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
It's like, you have to be.
Yeah, this is, this is like a, an intermediate water course going right through all the way down right there, so.
Yep.
Which is why we're trying to keep it as close away from that as possible. We are proposing a detention system in the rear, but again, that's subject to change. I mean, the wetlands may totally throw that off and, uh, there's septic in the rear too, but that also might change as well. We're, we're in the, we're in the process of getting a soil evaluator to do a couple spots out there to, um, check, to see what's going on, subsurface ones.
Okay, so if you were coming south down one oh six and you were taking the left, it looks like there's already a left-hand turning lane. Is that just for the light?
No.
No, that's, that's getting to the.
When you're close to the mutual bank.
To the light for the stoppage.
Yeah, that's to the light.
So you'd be crossing a double yellow on a left turn lane to get in from the southbound traffic.
Right.
Yeah, that's the thing, I'm not sure how that's gonna work out.
Right.
Yeah, you're gonna cross in that third left lane.
Right, I mean, 'cause, because this, this plaza is able to access because they get to get into that lane, I, I.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying, yeah, that's.
You'd be crossing a turning lane, right?
You'd be crossing a turning lane, yeah.
Yeah, there's a, um, a turning lane for Mutual Bank, but it, it doesn't show up until you're almost, pretty much in front of Mutual Bank. Does a left-hand turn, it's very thick.
Right. Okay.
As you're, as you're passing to desk, it's like right there, so.
It's a potential issue, being the traffic getting backed up if you're going southbound and you're trying to make that left turn coming in.
Correct.
It may be worth exploring having a, a second entrance. On that other side, 'cause it looks like you'd actually line up with or close to that stop and shop exit lane. As, as far as anyone coming that way down one oh six is gonna stop at the light and then.
Cause we then left into it. It wouldn't be a perfect, um, intersection, I, I think, and it might create issues just with the configuration and it's gonna be offset.
And if you remember when they were in talking about putting the buildings in back behind there, they were pro- proposing putting that there? And that would require him moving light boxes, lights, all sorts of stuff, just to make that work.
Okay.
That's why you didn't wanna do it that way.
Was that, you talking about the subdivision that happened, whatever happened with that, like?
Yeah. They just, they took it off the book.
They took it off the books, yeah.
There was a, yeah, there was a kind of many of subdivision being proposed there and there's a lot of information there that would relate to the soil and the wetlands and whatnot, so.
Right. I did receive some of that, those reports, um, and again, that, we did, we did have, have an area that's around this, just in the south corner from those reports. Um, I've been out there, I think it's a lot more than that, so I wanted to get my own soil scientist out there just in case, um.
I can't see where this turns in.
And I think he's, there's, there's, there's a lot to go up, um, sometime within the week, I believe, so.
Okay. What's the significance of the two, what appears to be two blocks there? Are you taking two blocks and combining them?
Yeah, you only have one and two columns.
This one was part of the lot that was part of the subdivision, which is why I'm asking, I think.
I just don't see that.
Currently we're looking at, the, our client has, um. They found a quick claim deed of that area and their, their legal team's trying to figure out if it's, if it's a viable lot still, because the subdivision didn't actually go through.
Right.
So.
But we approved some lotting that they were doing, 'cause I think they were trying to create the commercial parcels in the front.
I think this lot here with the O'Reilly building is physically kinda on.
With the radius.
They were gonna be buying ten feet of that just to be able to make, or they were maybe gonna be getting that lot just to make their frontage.
Right.
Cause I think that was, back then that was there, when we went through that, that was their issue. Is they were gonna be able to get their frontage by buying a section of that lot.
Cause I believe we approved an A and R plan for lotting that out.
Man, I believe so.
Yeah, again, my, my survey is supposed to like hash that out.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So I mean, our client wanted me to show this, just, just to get your thoughts on it, because he didn't really understand what was going on here and. I know that, uh, the GIS shows, you know, just the, this area, so it's kinda like a, we don't know what's going on yet, but.
Right. Okay.
But then again, if, if that is an illegal lot, this whole.
Yeah, you'll figure it out.
Is, is gonna be reconfigured and, um, which is why I also wanna know the, the question on the variance, um, for, for landscaping and, and buildings.
Do you, do you know if you would be looking at request for relief on building setbacks?
At this time, we don't, but if this happens, we probably will need to, if this is an actual thing, we would need.
I know, I get that, yeah. Alright, so this is not a buildable, you, you show no rounding or radius.
Oh, radius.
There is a, yeah, there is.
Yeah, there is.
I don't think that's, uh. So we have a plan. Maybe take a look at this plan for.
Yeah, because I don't see how that configuration works exactly here, 'cause even if you came down this forty-seven, twenty, fifty-five, you show a straight line.
And this one gets a lot of.
Yeah, this one isn't, this is what they approved, um, not too long ago, actually.
So we just don't know if they recorded it, so to your point, if we approved it, but they didn't record it.
Last year.
It can be reconfigured, 'cause that looks like it's longer coming all the way down, right?
Yeah, I saw a plan similar to this that had an old lot line that just went straight through, which is what your GIS shows, but, which is why, which is what I showed there.
Right.
But again, yeah, I, we, we definitely need to hash this out.
Is that Mass GIS, is that the information you're using?
Whatever's on your, uh, do you have a web, it's on your website, right?
I can't imagine a town has GIS information you could download, do we?
I, I believe there's working on it still.
Yeah.
Then it, then it's probably.
Must've been from this day, and that's probably outdated.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Just a quick question, what does this dash line represent?
Um, the hundred foot, okay, so, I don't know why the wetland line isn't showing up, it must've been no, no plot later, but the wetland line that we got from the subdivision.
Okay.
Um, was delineated, this is a hundred foot buffer.
Okay.
Right, so we would have to go through conservation.
Conservation, yes.
Alright, so since you're really concerned with like the pocket, and I guess my question would be, you got dumpster pad here, I assume that.
Yep, we, we typically, O'Reilly's typically does a board on board enclosure, so it's fully enclosed, um.
Okay, and you have no, um, no truck delivery, large truck, no loading bay, anything like that?
We, we designed for WB fifty, which is about a thirty-six foot long truck, but O'Reilly's definitely has smaller trucks than that, but they always say design for the WB fifty. Um, and typically what trucks do, they come in, they, they park right, well, they try to get into this area as best they can usually, 'cause they do, uh, pallet loading, they don't have a truck well. Um, and they just bring the material into the, through the pallets, into a overhead door that's typically in the corner here. So yeah, I guess the, the biggest concerns are the, are the actual property line, um, configuration, the. Left in, in traffic in general, um, anything else that you, you guys may have, uh, I know a lot of towns are like, there's an auto zone down the street, you know, but.
No, I mean, those things, I don't think should be, I don't think that's new, as far as the plan, I don't think it should be.
Talking about wanting a car dealership, uh, parts place in town for a while now, so.
Um, we would, we're, we'd be following the Massachusetts stormwater requirements, um, per stormwater quality and, and attenuation. Uh, if, it, it might have to be underground, um, depending on the water elevation. The design would most likely try to come up as fast as we can, um, it's, it slopes, I believe, it slopes down now, but we'd probably try to get up. Um, depending on, uh, septic, we have to bring in septic material and, um, we might have to do underground detention if it, the wetlands are closer than what appears, so.
Right.
I, what's your, uh, what's your take on stormwater here, um, in town? I, I looked for the manual.
I don't think there's anything specific apart from the Mass stormwater standards, so we don't have a higher rainfall amount, there's no increased detention or analysis or anything, I think as long as you meet the state standards. Generally, it's okay.
Shouldn't be your problem really, but I know they have an issue with runoff with that, the bank next to them, uh, being, have a lot of water coming.
Yeah.
That way.
Yeah, heading south.
To the south?
Yeah.
And it just ponds up there and doesn't go anywhere.
But. Survey probably don't have any features out there, when was the bank built?
Fair amount.
Fifteen years, no more?
Oh, it's not been here.
Yeah, I know that, uh, New Hampshire's getting on the strip move there, stormwater quality regulations and stuff like that, Massachusetts trying to implement the same. Especially with pre-treatment and treatment, in Connecticut, you only have to satisfy pre-treatment, but I think Massachusetts, you have to satisfy well, that could be mounted.
Yep, no, you're right. Yeah, I think figuring out how you're gonna handle that left turn coming off of one oh six is gonna be important and if you run any sort of IT counts or something to justify the reduction in parking to. Or even based on other facilities of similar size, if you have history of, you know, the use of the parking, that'd be good to know.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, we have done studies in the past, I think of like the peak hour demand is like seven cars, so thirty-six is even a lot, but O'Reilly's doesn't really like to go any lower than that, um, I'm not sure why. But obviously seven is kind of a risky thing to do too.
So it's two per hundred is what they're trying to target?
What was that?
Two per hundred is roughly what they're trying to target?
Yeah.
Two spaces per hundred feet?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, right, yeah. Oh, no, that'd be twenty, right?
Uh, one for every two hundred, sorry, the other way around, yeah.
Right. Right, and I think your, your regs are one per every one hundred, unless you do a reduction.
And that is one seventy-five, yeah, which does seem like a.
Seventy, so it needs seventy-three spaces.
Um, we're worth, definitely willing to take a look at those numbers if you come up with something, and especially if you could show us another Riley and how that operates and amount of traffic flow into there.
Sure.
I'd be willing to take a look at those.
I think signage is something that we look at quite a bit as well.
I will definitely talk with the architects and tell them that there's no budgeting on signage.
Yes.
Not at this point, no.
I'm not really sure, I can't tell you when we actually plan to apply, there's a lot of stuff that we obviously have to get through, um, and, but I know that, uh, the July sixth meeting may not have.
July fifth.
So, oh, fifth, so.
Yeah.
So I definitely wanted to get in, in front of you guys sooner than later, but again, you might not see this in, for like a month or so, so.
Okay, well, you might not see us on July fifth.
Um, alright, well, it was, it was nice meeting everyone, uh, and appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Definitely.
Alright, do we have anybody else here?
I don't know.
Site plan?
Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening, Walter Graney.
You're up next.
Yeah.
Is it, um, actually, why don't we? If he does, if Mr. Graney doesn't mind, um, the people.
Justin Leclair?
For six forty.
Sure, so get ready to sit here.
Yep, and there's a sign in the sheet also.
Justin, is that you out there?
Yes.
Come on in.
You're up if you're ready.
How you doing?
So go ahead and tell us what you're here for.
So we're here to, uh, do a dealership over on, uh, four thirteen, uh, Prince Road, uh, we're looking to do a twenty-four car license, uh, twelve inside, twelve outside. Okay. Pretty much what's in front of you, um, is the zoning for the indoor as well as the outdoor, um, we're looking to do, uh, standard car lot, keep it nice and clean and very neat, um, to get people in the door. As well as doing a little bit of landscaping outside, um, the cars that are gonna be inside, um, well, we, we originally put a zoning plan in for twelve cars. And we needed to abide by a certain rule, it's a forty-five hundred square foot building roughly, and, uh, we can basically fit seventeen comfortably in there, and we're only looking for twelve. And pretty much what's going in there is, uh, cars that we don't allow outside and pretty much doing online sales by appointment only. So it's nothing that people are gonna be coming in and out frequently, it's like I said, by appointment only.
Okay, I know we've looked at this before and had different configurations, um. How many full-time employees would there be?
Uh, basically one onsite at all times.
Okay.
And what did we have in there before, fourteen?
Yeah, the, just off the top of my head, it seems like seventeen was a higher number than I recall us ever.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that, that also required them to not have a gigantic trailer down the way.
That's true. Where's this site again, can you describe where it is?
This is where the, uh, old, um.
Hollywood East.
Hollywood East, that was what they were.
Yeah, right across from the, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Fire station.
Somebody came with something different for.
Yeah, the Nova Machines.
Yeah, what happened there?
Yeah, I guess he decided not to do the move.
Yeah, okay. There you go.
Yeah, basically the lot's big enough for what we're asking, we're just, we don't wanna have it overcrowded, like I said, we want it nice and neat, uh, for respectful business within the town. Not have anything too crazy, like I was told before, it was kinda not the greatest looking, yeah, it was pretty much nice, or.
Yeah.
We're obviously not looking to do that, we're trying to get people in the door.
Yeah, they started out not, not that bad, but then all of a sudden there was boats and.
Yeah, 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 no, we're not looking to do any of that.
It seemed like, I mean, we tried our best to work with them and it just seemed like they just, they got our okay and did whatever they wanted afterwards, it was kinda disappointing.
No, mainly, mainly our, uh, big thing is gonna be online, so it's not gonna be a lot of foot traffic, to be honest with you, um, like I said, the cars, the twelve cars that we're putting inside are things we don't wanna keep outside. Pretty much just buy it, like I said, buy it one minute only and, um, come in and out.
How do you, how do you set them up inside, are they gonna be like triple parked or are they gonna be just?
Um, so basically in the, uh, front, you can fit about like three or four, just kinda going in a line, um, but there is a space in the back where you can line up how, I don't even know how many, um, side by side.
Nine.
Nine, so nine side by side, and we can fit two rows of nine plus another couple inside. Nine, so nine side by side, and we can fit two rows of nine plus another couple inside, so it really won't be overcrowded with twelve whatsoever.
But it's not gonna be like a car dealership with like shiny lights and a nice glossy floor, they're gonna be, they're gonna be jammed in there pretty tight?
The cars, um, it won't, like, um, if we have twelve in there at one time, you can open the doors freely, you can walk in and out, walk around them, so like that's not gonna be overcrowded whatsoever.
Okay.
Cause like I said, I think it was seventeen, right? That you can fit in there with the stands.
If you use a square foot.
Yeah, if you use a square foot, basically.
Oh, okay.
So again, right, is this all your property coming all the way out to Plymouth Street, or is this?
Yeah, it goes right, it goes right to the, um, the main street there.
Yeah, so we did.
Back to the building and then.
They actually bought that when, when old Plymouth Street was discontinued, they were able to purchase that and combine it.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is just pretty much a preliminary, um, this had to go out to all the other departments as usual for site plan reviews.
Okay.
So, um, and the only thing we got back so far was from the board of selection.
I don't see a problem with it.
Basically just saying, um, wanting to know which plan is which for the parking. How many are devoted for display, employees, customers, which spaces will be allocated for each use? So they just want more specifics.
Mm-hmm.
On that type of thing, I can get you a copy of this.
Is there any chance that you could actually put a plan that, that's to scale? I know this is like a sketch and some of you, did you guys just eyeball this a little bit, or?
Uh, no, we actually, just the old one.
The old one?
Yeah, cause. This is three that, yeah, this is.
That's what we approved last time.
Only cause it seemed like last time. Yeah, like this does not work, this is not realistic.
No, yeah, so the lot is big enough for that, but it'd be overcrowded at that point, that's why we're trying to scale it down and make it look neat.
Yeah, no, I'm just wondering if you have to maybe widen out the pavement a little bit, cause these spaces look longer than these ones, these ones look wider than these ones.
No, honestly, with two on the side, you would have.
It fit pretty good.
Yeah, realistically, ten feet, maybe even more.
There, there is plenty of room.
Yeah.
Wow.
You could fit more cars in between the middle if you really wanted to.
We tried to take all the stuff on the side towards the side street, get it all parking down there so.
Right.
Okay.
Cause that's where the, uh, on that side, we're there, there are the houses on the, the neighborhood, so we tried to make that as the equal as possible.
Yeah.
Is this, this gravel path actually exists there so that somebody could?
That does exist there, but it's, is it, as of right now, it's zoned for a, a driveway from what we've been told. But we're not gonna use it as a driveway, cause that is what goes into the, uh, into, yeah, into that development.
It's gonna be a moat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty much gonna be grass in the next couple of months.
I was gonna say, I've seen gravel over there in a long time.
Yeah.
Now, I'm just thinking about fire access, right, cause if this is just gonna be kind of a this winding little entrance, they gotta get fire trucks back there.
It's wide open, the whole left side, yeah.
And this is all, uh, meets all the zoning requirements for the use and all the rest of that?
That still has to be determined, if they're gonna have to go to zoning.
Okay. You guys gonna do any sort of signage?
Uh, I believe we'll do one sign, there's one already pre-existing there, where it's just blank, it's just blank white. Nothing too big, nothing too crazy, it's just out in a lot.
You're not gonna have new lighted signs or anything on the building or anything like that, it's pretty low-key?
Yeah, pretty low-key, as what you see right now, I think the only thing we might do is put a couple shrubs in the front, so it's lighting it up a little bit and an awning or two over the front door. Kinda give some curb appeal instead of just a, to, just, it's a blank building, it's just like a showroom, yeah, exactly.
Any sign that you do, um, has to be approved by the building inspector.
Yeah, absolutely, yep, yep, we're aware.
Okay, we're, we're not gonna act on it today just because we have to wait for the other comments to come back, uh, but we appreciate you coming.
And it's only determination from the building inspector to just make sure as far as the.
The use of the license?
Yeah, a showroom, cause it's probably gonna be considered a showroom.
Oh, it's gonna be considered a showroom inside?
So the question there is, are you gonna have any parking for actual people coming to use the facility, right? You're, you're saying you're gonna have all these twelve spaces for exhibiting cars?
And while we did that on, did, um, this on the other sheet, right?
Just for additional parking. That's when we had come in, we weren't sure where we could put the rest of the people, so we used both the old one and the new one.
Yeah.
Which is making, um, I've actually.
Yeah, which is, I believe, what the board of selection wants you to actually determine.
Figure out who's responsible.
Meaning it's gonna be some additional, you have to put some more spaces in here to meet the actual users, the customers need?
Would you guys be flexible on the twenty-four cars? Because that, just, just to know, cause.
So with this one, I think, cause this one's cleaner.
Yeah, this can.
They're showing their twelve, but they would need employees and then customer parking to be noted.
Right.
Cause this is the old one.
Yep.
And this one's just much cleaner.
Yeah, I do think this is a better approach, and if you have the parallel parking for the employees on the left, it does seem a better approach.
It does look like it necks down there between those cars, so it might only be like ten or fifteen feet between the cars there at the end. But this isn't to scale, so maybe it's more in reality.
Yeah.
That side is open, is wide.
Yeah. Okay, so are you guys gonna put together a revised plan and resubmit that? Okay.
Excellent.
Definitely wanted to work with you.
Okay, awesome, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How's it going?
It's going okay.
Alright, uh, you're up.
Well, I'm Walter Yanley.
And I own, um, property, owned for some time on Hilton's Lane.
Okay.
I bought it from, uh, Mr. Webby. Um, just a couple of things, one thing I would like to clarify and to, to talk to you about something. Uh, I had some interest in the property, uh, over the, over the past summer, and you know, and last summer, last summer too. And, um, but somehow I think some of the people of interest that have interest are getting some of the wrong information. Just like to clarify that, and then, I'm not sure where it's coming from, that's okay. Um, they gained information that the permits have been rescinded on that for a subdivision. And that, from my notes and my records shows that's, that's not true, uh, for two reasons. Number one, uh, your minutes on, um, March fourth, two thousand, March fourth, I think it's two thousand and ten, show that that letter of rescinding was withdrawn, that's number one. I, I have.
Who was, who withdrew it?
Yeah, I played with it.
They, they withdrew?
We withdrew? That doesn't sound correct. I don't understand how we could.
Well, it's.
Well, you weren't on the board at that time.
Let's hear it, uh, yeah, I wasn't either.
No, none of you were.
Uh, that's what I know, that's what, um, that's what I have, that there was, that, that it was withdrawn. But that's the second part, uh, so if you wanna check it out, it's on March fourth, two thousand and ten.
So what, what exactly was withdrawn?
I got a letter, uh, saying, I have a mortgage on the property.
Yep.
I've always had a mortgage on the property. And I got a letter from my attorney at the end, I did say that the, um, the permits for a subdivision, approved subdivision, uh, were withdrawn because I didn't act on them.
So the subdivision was, was rescinded by the planning board?
Yeah.
Meaning it was not ever approved?
No, it was approved, just an.
Can I just clarify, is, is this the large parcel at the end, not the Webby that owns the existing house on Hilton's, right?
It's the, it's, well, yeah, I, it's the, uh, as you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Mr. The Webby's house is, uh, let's see, I believe it's right here. It's right, it's the existing Webby house is right there.
Okay.
Okay, I own all the way through here.
Okay.
Okay, from here to here. So it was an existing, uh, I got, the history this was, I had, uh, got it approved for a sub, residential subdivision. Then I went for a higher density use, and I got all the variances for the higher density use, but those have lapsed, there's no doubt about that.
But you do still have a subdivision approval?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so in two thousand and five, it was approved?
Mm-hmm. And here is the motion right here in the minutes for the fourth, I mean, I should make more copies, but I didn't.
That's alright, we can share.
Okay, and right here is the motion that I'm talking about, that was rescinded.
So it was going to be withdrawn and you withdrew the withdrawal?
No, 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 no.
No. So they, yeah, they withdrew the rescission letter dated.
What exactly were you going to rescind?
I wasn't rescinding.
They were, they were. Planning board was going to rescind his subdivision.
Can we do that after?
Because he never acted on it. I don't know.
No, I didn't do that, that was what I was, I went for like a higher, you know, density.
Right.
And then the market just, just.
Yeah.
Yep, evaporated.
I don't know about that market.
Oh, man, that's a good one.
He's got the.
Yeah, he has the, it's, it's, right, but that's.
I'm gonna have to research it.
Yeah, I also didn't have to catch up on this one.
Okay, there's also, uh, just, um, I'm, I'm on the train.
Yep.
But I've been around, we all am for a while, it's also under, um, Associated Massachusetts General Laws. It's chapter forty-one, section, section eighty-one W. Inside, yeah, it's, uh, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one W under ALM. With a mortgage on there, you, you can't rescind the permits, unless I'm at the door, this, when this is your attention. Uh, but we, that's probably for the protection of banks over the years and stuff like that.
Well, so a subdivision approval is good in perpetuity and never expires?
No, no, as long as it's.
You've been here since two thousand and ten?
No, that's a different, Mr. Millie, that's what I'm getting at. That's a weird rule.
It's there to protect the banks and shield, you know, they have all did all the juiciest.
So then, going back to the rescission aspect of it, do you know, was the planning board planning to rescind the original approval only if the other one was acted on?
No, 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 it was, those permits expired, that was for seventeen townhouses, which I got the variances for, um, through all the appropriate, um, committees.
Yep.
And, um, but the, you know, the market changed, the market just, it, it changed, I just, that stuff just evaporated. So I've just, I've just had this land for a long time, so I've had some interest in it for a subdivision here, and, you know, folks have, you know, come in here and they got the information that there's no permits on it. That's, that's created, it creates a bit of a hardship, so that's, I like, that's one of the things, that's one of the things I'd like to explain.
So you're trying to figure out if it actually has been rescinded?
It can't, it hasn't been rescinded. I'm not, I'm not being a.
We'll, we'll have to take it to our land attorneys.
Yeah, 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 that's fine.
Yeah, so, alright, I'm just, yeah, I'm just, I think we're all trying to catch up, so it looks like you tried to change it and that was the reasoning for the rescinding.
No.
You.
It's, no.
According to this. Um.
It was rescinded because of lack of action.
Explains that.
Which we can.
The time limit had exceeded in order to build a subdivision and, and now what is being proposed is different than that, different than what was approved by this board, so that. So you withdrew your seventeen lot, or your seventeen.
I think this expired, the part, the variance is for that expired.
You didn't act on laws and those.
Did you get approval for that one as well?
Yeah.
Everything was fully approved department?
It was, as far as I remember, it was, it was a long time ago.
But as reading this, the reason for the planning board deciding to rescind was that you proposed a different use?
And I brought to the attention of the board, okay, that under what I just told you, the, uh, Associated Massachusetts laws, um, that you, you know, and I, you couldn't rescind it, and also that, you know, I was gonna just keep it as a subdivision. So then there was a vote taken there, and the letter to rescind was, uh, you know.
Yep.
Withdrawn, this, this was back ten years, so.
Yeah, so it seems like the subdivision is not been rescinded.
They withdrew their, their rescension?
It's right there in the minutes, man, I can't, I, I don't know whether it's ten years ago or something.
Well, I've got, I've got as much as I have in that file, and I will pull everything out, but I don't recall anything from the planning board withdrawing their letter of rescension of the subdivision, I'm, that's just.
No, no, I, I, I.
So is, is your question is for the validity of that plan, or are you questioning whether or not that is?
Yeah, viable.
That's, that's, yeah.
Cause based off of this, that, that would be, but we're, obviously we gotta look further.
Yeah, yeah, no.
But I'm just wondering if that's your question to us, is whether or not this is still valid?
Yeah, okay, statement of question, I mean, sure, whatever, however, yeah, that's what I'm trying to, I'm just trying to think of something, I'm trying to get, I get away, you know, trying to get me ducks in line.
No, I understand, I'm just, just not sure what exactly you're asking, what, what you're asking from us now.
What I'm asking as far as the research that right there.
Okay.
The vote, the vote was taken and, you know, that's, that's my, uh, document on that, so it's off your website. And just to clarify that.
Okay.
So I can do something with it.
Okay.
Alright.
I understand now, you, you just have, yeah, no problem.
Alright, okay.
We, we can definitely do that.
The, the second, the second piece of that, like, just like the, I guess, get a field or something, is modifying, uh, let's just say it's approved and that's the same, right? It's, let's just consider that, so it's, uh, the next one is modifying this so it's, um, more aligned with the neighborhood and less environmental impact. Me, you know, just go with, uh, two, more, two lots off the Hilton's Lane, uh, not extending it down, this is right here.
Do you have any plans on everything?
I think the front one, the front one.
Couple, couple, the cover shows everything.
What I like, what I'd like to do, and, um, is just go, just, uh, go for two lots, just modify this, just go, go two lots. Reconfigure this, this and this lot here, I don't know what I'll do with the back, maybe deed it over to the conservation and put a restriction on it, I'm not sure. Just two, just two lots on this, and keep this to gravel, and just go to gravel road, and just get away from, pay off the mortgage again on it. That's what I, that'd be my ultimate goal. So the, it has less environmental impact, there's no wetlands crossing on that, and it's, uh, less intrusive on the neigh, on the neighbors out there. I talked to the Webby, it's like Joe Webby, I sat down, uh, with Joe, with Joe and talked to him, uh, about this, and he, he doesn't have any problem.
Yeah, I don't know if we do private roads though necessarily.
Oh, I'm just saying, it's Hilton's Lane, it's, it's a gravel road the way it is, and it's a gravel road there.
Were, was the lotting plan approved and recorded? Do you know, so, okay, so there is an actual right of way there right now?
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, there's, I own, I own, I own all of this.
So you own this, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, I own all that.
Not accepted, okay.
So what I'm trying to do is just like I'm saying, is just modify this, instead of going with the four lots, just go, you know, go with two, put some sort of restrictions on this and just get, get away from it.
So basically, you don't wanna.
You don't wanna build the road?
Build the road.
I don't, yeah, and, and the reason for that, the reason for, for that is, you, you look at what the cost of the road construction is, is a pretty significant, um, wetlands crossing down in here.
The green pops up and then down.
Well, it was, was, I've, I've walked this, I, I'm, I'm just. Uh, it looks like it was farmed at one time, someone, they probably dug it all over here, they probably dug a lot of this out, just for drainage for the back part. Cause you look at the age of the trees and things, it was out there for a significant amount of time with wetland signs years ago, and folks, you know, folks, I mean, Stephen Idis, very well-respected guy. And, uh, that's really what it was, it's not staining water or anything like that, it's just the way it was done for farming years ago.
Next, I know, well, I mean, it was a few years ago and we had that crazy flood, this water ended up actually all the way up into here.
Is that right?
Oh, yeah, certainly, and they were pumping water out of this back behind the Nasserada piece.
This is where the Webby's living, uh, Joe's son lives now.
Okay.
Well, we really can't do anything until we find out.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, and, but as far as us entertaining a, a new plan, I.
I think you resubmitted a new plan at that point, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, no, I, I understand that, but, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to avoid more and more, you know, cost on, I'll just be honest with you.
Yeah.
Be honest with you, and, uh, I'm just saying, like, right now it's approved for four, I'd just like to bring it down to two, uh, two lots. Like I said, if there, that back lot there, I'll throw a conservation restriction on it, something, whatever it is you folks want, and just to.
Well, you can actually talk to conservation about that.
Yeah.
That's not a decision we would be.
No, I understand that, I understand that, but I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, so you're not gonna try to develop later on after you get an approval for it, I, I understand.
You know, I don't wanna avoid anybody when I'm walking down the street, you know?
Yeah, so you're talking about developing these two lots?
Yeah, and just, yeah, I mean, pretty much, I mean, it's, because the, the Hilton's Lane itself goes right. Yeah, and just, yeah, I mean, pretty much, I mean, it's, because the, the Hilton Lane itself goes right to somewhere right about here.
Is it already paved to that point or?
Just crushed stones?
Crushed, no, it's, it's always been gravel. It's always been, this, this is what I always said, it's, uh, God over here.
Oh, so he has just access off a gravel.
Yeah.
So that is an actual right of way, it just has a gravel road there right now, going to his house.
Mm-hmm.
Going to the one house.
Yeah.
Well, no, it technically, it does serve this house also.
So now you have a four house and a half is dead end gravel road.
Yeah, just, just a dead end right now.
Is that something you'd entertain? Just, I'm just trying to pull and see what, make a, make a direction here, that's what I'm trying to figure.
Yeah, although I would suggest that you give us time to research the other thing.
Oh, no, I will, I will.
Only because, you know what I mean, I'd hate to say, oh, yeah, have them draw up a plan and then we find out, you know, rather than wasting time and money and effort.
No, I just, I, my, my full intent was just to give, you know.
Yeah, get a feel.
What I'm going.
Yep. Um, yeah, so that's what I would suggest, if you could just give us, give us time to, to research the first issue, and then we can give you probably.
I do recog, I do recognize it sometime, you know, I get that.
And I personally might have a bit of an issue with four houses being served off a gravel road, where there's a lot of subdivisions in town. Where you, there's three or four houses that somebody's covering up and, you know, you have to just build the road to be part of it, to get your snow plowing and all the access and all the rest of it.
It's being plowed right now by the town.
And, yeah, that's what the town does, but, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna get it, yeah.
The town does a lot of stuff it's not.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Supposed to be doing with some of these subdivisions that aren't approved yet.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's something.
I mean, you know, even, even, I just want, what I'm trying to get away from is, is the cost of road construction driving the cost of the lots up to it becomes out of sight to build on. And so, you know, just try to get simple, that's what I'm trying to do.
And you gotta build a seven, right, to make the money to offset the cost of the road.
I have to, I'd have to do something, yeah, I, yeah, you'd have to do something with it, you know what I mean, and, um.
Where, even if you shorten it up, right, and do your cul-de-sac turnaround on this side now, instead of having it cross the wetlands, and that minimizes some of that cost.
Yeah, I'd have to bring it down here, I mean, do, do that, and, but, and just like I said, is trying to, uh, you know, if, if it's a. Paved to a driveway spec is a whole different than paved to a road spec. I mean, that's really what I'm looking at.
It's, it's wider, you need the trees, landscaping, utilities, electric, all that stuff.
Yeah, right, exactly. There's already, you know.
Yeah, I don't know how you get out with a driveway spec.
Okay.
With that many houses on there.
Okay.
Um, that's just.
Yeah, we've got prohibitions on shared driveways and all sorts of other stuff, and, yeah.
Okay, well, we can figure, we'll figure, we'll figure one step by one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay, if, um, do you, do you folks ever do, uh, hammerheads as opposed to rotaries, circles?
I don't think so.
No, and we also, I, I forget with the, the length of any dead end, it's like three hundred, right?
Thousand, I think.
Thousand?
This is.
Without a turnaround, do you mean? Or?
Without a second, without a second.
This would, this would definitely be, uh, under, under that.
Okay.
On a re, on a reconfigure, I'm just talking about, it, with, uh, if you do, if you do, uh.
To save on space of pavement.
To save on space, if you do hammerheads as opposed to.
Well, I think we just adopted a, we may have adopted the larger, um, fire apparatus, right? Did we go for the R forty to the R fifty?
To buy, what do you mean?
No, the requirement for the fire department, I think we had the, I think we were going, and I, we'll double check that. I think we were going off the R forty, which is their requirement for that two axle vehicle.
It's a, it's a bus, it's the same as a bus, right?
That's what I, I, just one thing that we gotta look at, to make sure that, cause we got a larger truck, and to make sure that it's the same turning radius. Which, which may exclude the bullhead, is what, is kind of what I'm getting at.
Right, okay. But we can, you know.
Yeah.
So let me know.
Yeah.
All right, so that's, we'll take away your time though.
Okay, so.
Okay, thank you.
You too.
Yeah.
Alright, so the last one, and the last two, I guess, town bar fuel tank placement?
They need to replace the fuel tank down, down bar, and the engineers are just asking if they have to go through a full site plan review for this. So this is the plan, and really, I believe I need you guys to determine if a full site plan review is gonna have to be. Um, applied for.
There's a lot of mess. So, so what is it, an underground fuel tank?
I believe it's an underground fuel tank, and they want to, I think they wanna make it above ground now.
Is there anything that's good for dangerous cars that are on?
And the question is whether or not they need to come in for a site plan review, because they're essentially constructing a new gasoline storage tank?
So they're gonna pull it in and bring in above ground?
Yes.
Then pour slab, anyway, they're just gonna use.
Yeah, it'd probably be similar to what they did at, um. Really, is where they built the entire pit for the, the tank, that would hold the volume. So what is the rule on site plan review for this?
It's the town, I'm surprised they're asking us it all.
Yeah. Certainly didn't ask us about the sound. Doesn't seem like they would be.
I, I don't think so, they're not altering use, not changing anything really, other than the type of storage system. Same place.
Do we know why they're doing this?
Probably because they're old, tanks are just deftly.
Just gonna do a bunch of soil to remove and.
Pump that out, pull them on the ground, cut them off. Check the soil, make sure they weren't leaking.
This is plenty of property, that's a fact issue, so they could potentially run into.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I could see is. That it's still public access.
But this is only for town.
Yeah. I don't see why this is. This is really interesting.
Pick up any sort of spill.
They probably would have to think about it in time. Yeah, I don't see, I was expecting it to be similar to the storage tank down off of one oh six, it's. Basically in its own foundation.
Yeah.
But this pad has no vertical walls. Sometimes they'll even just put a channel in and have drainage. But doesn't have that either.
So then the formal question we need to answer right now is whether or not they even need to go through site plan review?
Of, of what we do, yeah.
Is it going through any other town departments?
I'm sure it would have to. Whether it be conservation or water health, fire department.
I was gonna say fire department, so I'm gonna, I don't know about that.
And if they did go through a formal site plan review, there's no fees to pay or anything, it's just a matter of whether or not we.
Right, because it's for the town, yeah.
Yeah.
And basically the site plan here, we can send it out to our own, we do it on the air, that we, that are choosing. And, um, it would go to all the other departments as well for their.
We just find out if it's required and tell them that we could do that for them anyway, send it out.
Yeah, and he'll have to provide more plans and stuff, this is only one we got.
Oh, just multiple copies, right, cause they already have the plans, they just need to make the copies, right?
Right.
It can't hurt to make sure that they're doing it right.
Yeah, they're asking the question, they're being on board with distributing it to everybody, and, uh, get a look at it.
Yeah, I agree, especially with, I don't.
So you want all the boards to review, and we would like to send it out to our own engineer as well, or do you wanna pass that?
We can ask them. I, I, cause like we said, I don't even know if they have to do this.
Well, that I could get from Charlie.
That would be, that would be.
Yeah, I think that's the best.
Cause if they have to, then just send that out to our engineer. And, and if they, and if they, uh, and if they don't have to, the polite thing we do would be. Ask if they would like us to look into it further.
Because ultimately, we're paying the cost as the town for the peer review, there is no money coming in to pay for that.
That's not that much, it's ours.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly, so it would have to, it would come out of our expense account.
Yeah. Okay.
Which I think we are, you know, the, one thing that we were all concerned with was containment, which. If, if not coming to us officially allows them to circumvent that and not put anything in, I'd. I don't agree with that.
Yeah, cause even getting into the catch basins, it's not necessarily gonna go straight there.
I mean, it's almost, but it's.
If that's just gravel.
Once around, you get off that slab, it's just right. We wouldn't let anyone else do it without containment.
No.
It's not safe.
So what's that? Call a site plan review and just go, or ask for formal opinion?
I wouldn't mind confirming with Charlie first.
Okay.
Okay.
Always points us in the right direction.
One more.
Landscaping?
Um, yeah, the guy down at the corner, one oh six fifty-eight.
That's who I thought it was.
Yeah, we've been trying to get him to come back in. Um, he basically. Is not concerned right now with, um, doing his garage and the used cars and stuff like that.
Who's dealing with his landscape?
Because he's dealing with his landscaping, right? He, um, I received this email. At four o'clock when I was heading out.
I'd like to appreciate planning board for the patience with my project, but I would like to hold it until I can get all of the necessary documents together. This part of the year, we work hard and I do not have the time to put everything together. As soon as everything is ready, I'll be back. Thank you.
Perfect.
Alta Ferrera.
Okay. Did he make a formal application and submit fees and payment?
I think it's all been informal meetings.
Yeah, he came under the.
So there's no sudden continued, uh.
No, I'll just fold the paperwork and we can just bring it forward when he's ready, and he's gonna do a few adjustments anyway, so.
Okay, uh, I'm going business to Form A on three ninety-five Plymouth Street.
Yeah, Mark, um. You can sign it, Jonathan has to sign it, but he's not here, and Gordon still has to sign it, I'm sure Mark.
So how did this work? We approved, what, what were we waiting on?
We were waiting to get, remember, we wanted the parcels.
All the parcels labeled, okay.
Labeled, um. And he did say that they may in the future get this line up here to get the septic on this parcel. Remember that?
Oh, yep.
They basically have to determine if they're gonna be taking this down, is condemned anyway, and, um, Rob actually was wondering about these two buildings. If we should see if they're willing to take those down as well.
So we approve that?
Yeah, alright, so basically, um, what it comes down to is, is what they're approved, yeah, we have really no.
Okay.
Um, so, although we all agree that we'd like to see them configured to make these more conforming. Um, he's still dealing with the clients, I guess there's a little bit of a language barrier also there. So he's saying it's a, he's trying to figure out ways to express this to them, and trying to get them agree to demolish this building. He wanted to see if he could reconfigure with the note to be razed, but.
Okay.
So even though the septic.
It's, this line is here, they did it this way because this building would then come, become non-conforming if they had the septic.
But even though the septic now would not meet the Title V requirements by putting the lot line there, that doesn't preclude them from creating a lot?
I, I think because it's also still in, it's the same ownership, so.
But it's an actual parcel.
If we make it, if they make it a parcel, they can do it themselves.
And I think the.
Because, alright, so these are already like two lots, so basically all they did was reconfigure to add this to this.
But I'm just saying, right now the property line's here, right?
Correct.
So the septic system is sixty feet from the property line. In this condition, it's gonna be two feet off the property line.
Right. It's making it more conforming.
It's making it less conforming from a septic compliance perspective.
No, it's closer to the property now, right?
So, yeah, the, there's minimal setbacks at the leaching field needs to be from property lines. And this does not meet those anymore, but it did before, even though it was in a separate parcel.
I don't know about property lines and septic systems.
Yeah, I think you do have to be like ten feet from the soil absorption area.
Yep. So I, I don't, yeah. I wasn't here last week yet.
From all, from everything that I got from, um, all the information was basically, we had, cause we had asked for, um, legal counsel on this.
Yeah, I remember reading that.
So even their note was basically like, hey, you guys kinda don't have a lot of jurisdiction for this part. You will when they come back and try to change things, but it was, I interpreted it as like we were best to approve. Rather than have an issue later on.
Because it didn't exacerbate any land use conformities or non-conformities?
Not exactly sure of the reason, other than I think that we had no reason to not approve, and I think that was the bottom line. Is that we had nothing to.
Point to.
Nothing, yeah, to point to, to say that we want.
Besides the whole thing.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so then just moving property lines.
Yeah.
Is just moving property lines. They could put them wherever they wanted, as long as the setbacks didn't get any worse than they currently are, is basically.
Because they have all their frontage already, and it's.
They have the frontage, they don't have the setbacks, obviously, for that front building, but it's been there for so long that.
And we're not modifying those setbacks by this action?
Correct.
Those buildings.
So I, I mean, you guys remember, I started out being like, there's no way we're gonna approve that.
That's what I said too.
That's what I, that's how I started, but after I read.
Send that back to, like.
What, what we got from counsel, I, I felt as if there was nothing we could do other than approve it at that time.
Okay.
Trust me, I was disappointed.
So who was there last week? Was it you, Gordon, and?
And John, yeah. I don't want anybody to know.
This is the same place that had, uh.
Seven apartments.
Had like seven renters in a full apartment building.
Did they put a stop to the seven renters?
Yes.
I'm thinking I date this for the approval.
Now it's six, and they're in front of the CBA.
Like you're.
Trying to get six.
Yeah.
Yeah, today's.
How's that going?
I mean.
I hope not well.
As each one signs it, we might have to redate it, I don't know.
But, that's.
How about June two thousand and eighteen?
Yeah.
Sweet.
Now you're mile already.
So what are you doing, switching pens?
Two's good.
Thank you.
Didn't give us enough copies anyway.
Maybe we don't need to stamp them enough?
Of course, we have no idea how much we lose the stamps. That's the one thing we don't interact with.
Alright, uh, next one, unregistered vehicle permit extension for Harrison.
Board of Selectmen has received the attached application for other pathway to third, a multiple unregistered vehicle permit for maximum two vehicles. Probably located map seventy three, lot seven A.
Where is this?
Next to this.
Next to what?
The red farmhouse.
Which red farmhouse, oh. Really right next door, on which side?
Same side.
So now we have buildings all over the place and.
You haven't seen that old truck out there?
And they wanna park two cars there?
Well, that one vehicle is there, that one old truck, and he just wants to extend the permit, I guess.
He just wants to have an unregistered vehicle on the property.
Doesn't wanna move it at this point.
I don't blame him, if it doesn't move, we never wanna move it.
And he has to get a permit for that?
Yep.
Not even a house there or anything, it's just a empty lot.
You've been dumping dirt there for a long time, so.
Oh, that's the one even further.
That's even further down, oh, okay.
How many unregistered vehicles are you allowed to have on your lot?
One.
And he would like to have two?
If you actually have.
Doesn't matter if you have a house there or not?
Well, that's, I think, why he has to get this, cause there is no house there. He doesn't.
Oh, alright, yeah.
I guess if there's no dwelling in the apocalypse, right?
Interesting.
Yeah, cause I'm pretty sure there's nothing about whether or not there's a dwelling that's just based off of.
No, just to extend it, sign off if you want a site plan review.
Oh, cause he has one already. They're also letting us know that on Tuesday, July tenth, they will be holding a meeting, anyone would like to attend.
For this, well, and their normal meeting, that's a, no, that's great.
Cause they are the ones that have to grant authorization?
Yeah, there's nothing.
There's nothing for us to review for a site plan for a guy parking two cars on a lot. Um, well, I know when we approved.
He's parking decrepit vehicles not on Encirvius, so there's any leaks or. Anything that comes out of those, poor decrepit vehicles is gonna go right into the ground there, right? If I, if they are, but I think they are.
I can't see that there'd be any fuel left in them anyway, probably evaporated.
Got a full site plan review.
Yeah, there's nothing that we should do for this.
No, I, I think on the last.
They should, they should decide to grant them the permit or not.
Wait, right, but they put a time limit on them as well, and that's why he's asking for an extension.
Right, well, that's what I mean, that he's not asking us, he's asking the selectman, right?
Right, but the selectman goes to the boards.
No, I get it, and that's why I just said, I don't think we have anything that really needs to be, you wouldn't be outside of it.
You signed the last two, cause I wouldn't.
Yeah, let's get your father's name on there, he's gonna be like.
He got this guy?
That's just trash.
It's true. But I think the only one that we had an issue with and we asked them to come in was the B and W paving, cause it was a multiple cop.
Yeah, cause he was including his entire business. He comes in, he's like, I, I don't know, like, two or three cars, and I'm like.
But I think anytime anyone's ever asked a request for one more, it's just granted, it's, doesn't.
I agree. Do I have to fill it out, where is this? Application for permanent, following application.
You're just saying that we don't need a site plan review, right?
Mm-hmm.
We, is it on that page?
Yeah.
This is why they make me do this.
Wow, yeah.
That's right.
An entire process.
Alright, so while you're doing that, um.
You think I know how to do it?
The assessor sent a memo in regards to forty two Thompson Street, the Form A that we approved, uh, for Mister Campbell, not too long ago.
Where, where is that one? One oh five?
One oh five.
Where you clip cut those trees on the opposite side of the road, they're starting to cut some down?
Yeah, that's for, um.
His son?
The McCarthys.
Yeah, that's the one I was thinking for Joe.
Down Thompson Street heading south.
Yep.
It's on the left, uh, the right.
Yes, past the existing house with the stream, right, they cut some trees down there recently.
Before that.
Before that?
Yeah.
North of that existing house, north of the new one that just had their lawn suited?
I don't know, I'm not down here.
I go every day on that road.
Basically, there was a, a Mister Campbell owned a lot and he cut out a lot, and then there's some remaining land, we did a Form A.
Yeah.
Um, basically, this says, from the board of the se- of assessors. Our office has received the Form A plan for forty two Thompson Street to create a new lot and attach remaining acreage to Mister Campbell's property. This will not be possible until a deed transferring ownership from Diane H. Campbell to John D. Campbell, senior. To John D. Cam- oh, wait, I'm sorry, ownership from Diane and John to John. Individually for the thirty seven point five acres is recorded, we found these to be two separate lots with two separate deeds combining only for billing purposes. Going forward for F Y nineteen, we will be willing billing each lot separately.
Okay, strip her name from it.
Okay, so basically, we had lot numbers and they had it on the two different ownerships in the deed.
No, he's trying to combine of one lot that had joint ownership and trying to take single ownership of it. So that's an issue.
So Mister Campbell will be taken here, that, just, it was just an F Y.
Take that under, under advisement, make note.
Well, we're not also, we shouldn't have to be looking through deeds either.
That's what, kind of what I was saying, like, we saw lots based off of assessors' numbers and.
Correct. Feel the rest of that application?
Putting it together.
Thank you.
Well, man.
Yeah.
One more time?
Uh, okay, secretarial items, state ethics.
Oh, yes, you have yours, you need to sign.
Do I need to do something, or can I just sign?
You also do this, you have to go online and do the, um, state test.
Can I sign this now?
That you can sign and you can do the other one and you bring in your certificate when you've, um, passed the course.
It says that you're not allowed to work against the content in any facet.
And if you go to Dunkin' Donuts, you're only allowed like forty nine dollars worth of free donuts. He said there's another one to sign as well?
No.
No, you have, you have to take the online.
Yes, it's online, okay.
Do the online testing, bring in the cer- certificate that you have to print out when you're done.
Do you even read that?
Do you have a link or something to it?
I'm gonna question everything that you have to do this time.
The link is, I'll get you another copy.
Do you wanna just email it to me?
No.
Yeah.
I had to do a search, she didn't even send it to me, you know, and she was like, it's this, find it. I probably took the wrong one, as long as I came back with an official looking signature page.
Yep.
Alright, anybody going to the board of selecting meeting for the zoning bylaw committee or planning on serving on the zoning bylaw committee?
Um, once again, I'm, I'm willing to, but not committing too much at this time.
I think at some point.
What are they gonna do?
You told me to send a memo that you were going to do it.
Yeah, so I'm gonna show up at the meeting where we talk about whether or not we're gonna have meetings, I'm willing to do that.
Go on Tuesday?
Yep.
Alright, do you want me to send you an email to me by mail?
That would help, thank you.
I doubt it, I couldn't commit, well, the whole thing is, is, I don't. The, even if I have input on when the meetings are, especially this summer, like, I'm really not gonna break anything to show up to them.
Yeah, I strive to make these meetings.
We're gonna do too much too quickly.
You know what I mean, I don't, I don't wanna commit to it.
It is, it's just.
Okay, alright, so on that note, let's move it along.
Well, should we, John?
That's it, second?
Hi.
All is in favor?
Hey.
Hi.